Sorry, but you know, it's there in black and white.
Thank you very much, that was my proposal. I'm going to stop you there for a minute, since you're now insulting the Chair of the Town Council. Because have you noticed in the plan then that the Ruttland House Community Trust actually submitted an additional plan showing a reduction on car parking spaces?
By one.
Yeah, two, by one.
By one, so I had noticed, but I'm saying that that's irrelevant, the one space. We, I would like to make a proposal and the council can decide whether they agree with it. Is that we agreed to the, we are, no, the council agreed to the development and grant permission for the building as per the RCC planning application submitted by the RHCT, but we do not grant permission for the car park.
But you voted for that?
No, we haven't.
No, no, sorry, we're going to get back to it.
We're allowed to make amendments, and that's a very clear amendment, and it keeps the green space. Eight spaces is quite a, it makes a bigger...
So you mean like, so on the map, there's, at the back here, there's these two bits here?
Yeah, that can be used as a garden area.
Are you saying that all of that there should come out?
All the parking, yes.
There's a lovely section.
All the eight, all the eight, all the eight parking spaces are not needed. It quite clearly says in the, in the Ruttland County Council Report that they don't need it.
I, well, here's what I'm going to do, is that I...
So I gave a proposal with my amendment.
Right, okay, so does anybody want to second that amendment, by the way? Bear in mind, the Ruttland House Community Trust might not want to do that, George, but you want to...
Yeah, but we're the landlord, and we can say we don't want our land for that.
Thank you. Castle Wilson, the, the, without the, so they can do the building, but to actually review how the parking is, look back and actually not do all that parking there. So that's, that's an amendment to the proposal that's on the paper which I've got turned over here. So that would be item eight, the first bit. Council agreed to development and grant permission as per the RCC planning application submitted by RHCC, RHCT, but minus this car parking section.
Yeah.
All of them?
All, like, all eight spaces.
Right, okay, that's been, that's a proposed, that's a, you've, um, all those in favour of that amendment? Show hands, please. One, two, three, four, all those against. One, two, three, so it's going to be, and all those abstaining. There'll be some abstainers in there, too. So, so in theory, we have a proposal on the table now, which, that the, we're allowing them to build the building, but with that, that means they'll have to rethink how they're going to do their car parking. Right, that's the proposal.
Four classes in.
Do you got more?
How many sections?
Two, so we're missing eight, nine. So can we have a vote again?
Yeah, all those in favour was, one, two, three, four, five, is? Oh, sorry, go ahead, all right, okay. So, right, let's, um, we're now going to vote, well, in actual fact, in theory, that means that that's gone through. In effect, the council has now agreed to the development to go ahead, and obviously minus that car parking section. Okay?
That's great.
Yeah, that's what, that's what...
If I may read on the amendment, we still need to...
All right, all right, okay, oh, sorry, let's have a full show of hands now, eh, on for actually having that application go through there.
Which one?
The one that you just...
Oh, right.
Yeah, so everyone show hands, so Martin, she, her, and up, Sally, and Daniel. So one, two, three, four, five, yeah, six, let's go for it, six, yeah, all those against, all those abstaining. Three, anyway, still...
Four. Or that was an against, I think.
Six, and, all those four, put your hands up. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six, all those against, one, all those abstaining, three. So in effect, at the moment, what we've agreed then is that RHCT planning permission is granted. By the way, I just wanted to answer a couple of questions that came up there, I obviously didn't need to. The land encroaching on to the allotment, um, David, is not, by the way.
No, it's just a mistake.
That was just, just because we were trying to muddle up something, too, got an understanding. There's not an automatic right for, are the Community Trust to again purchase land in the future? The council will have that decision. Yes, screening of some sort has been agreed with the residents, and we did say that it would be built into the lease, that a screening has to be appropriate, um, and that the untidy expectation you raise of Ruttland House Community Trust are already more than aware of that and doing all they can. And when it came to the rent bit, on item eight, the next section down, it goes, um... Right, so, so council on behalf of the residents asks Ruttland House Community Trust, so we need to make three more decisions here. Council on behalf of the residents ask Ruttland House Community Trust to take into consideration their concerns and ensure a suitable screen of trees, this looking to be incorporated into their lease, will be managed in the responsibility of Ruttland House Community Trust. So that is a proposal, so I would propose that from the Chair. You seconded the party.
Yeah.
So all those in favour of that? Is that everybody's hands up? Yes, that's unanimous. The item eight, the third bit down, the council review the land rent with Ruttland House Community Trust and any variation to the lease. So we don't do that as councils, that's not our job, so Joy was correct, that it, there isn't. We have to make sure we get good value for land, or for the rent. So now that we've agreed to this, is that it's now, we empower the clerk to go off and work with a land agent and Ruttland House Community Trust and reevaluate what the rent should be, okay? Are you proposing, Martin?
Um, I think, um, it would be better if, if the two proposals are put together in a better way than this worded. Because I think I'd like to see the working group continue, so that the lease is done properly in consultation with the council and the residents, and then we don't have issues further down the line. So we, we, we need to also obviously grant the permission for the clerk to instruct the solicitor once those things come, because solicitors are going to cost a lot of money, and the trust will have to pay part of that, so we need to minimise the costs. Um, well, we can dispute that, but anyway.
In the lease, we've already agreed to that.
Okay, fine, but, but we, we need to be in a situation where we go to the solicitor and say, this is what we've agreed, not, not to the solicitor, you sort it, because they'd be great to do it, and it will cost a fortune. So this is the opportunity we have now to work together properly to iron out all the issues. So that's my proposal.
I'm going to go, Joyce, first of all.
I just found that the Secretary of State's approval for the lease of the land makes it clear that the Town Council is obliged to ensure it continues to receive a market rental.
We don't receive that from any of our properties, and that's what I've said over years, but it's not really...
Martin, thank you, that's what, go on. So you're saying then that you want the, the rent, the land rent, and the land valuation, all that, all that bit there, would be coupled together where the lease is looked at by a working group?
Yeah, because they've got to source an independent valuer, we can't ask a solicitor to do that, solicitor doesn't do valuation.
Right, Martin's put a proposal on the table, that we have, the working group continue to, to look at how the lease works.
And you did two things, I suppose.
Yeah, land valuation, the rent, and managing the lease on heritage, and then all the lists included in it. Daniel?
Um, sorry, I do worry that that might be seen as a, as a micro-management of that project.
No, because we're the landlords.
Thank you, no, you don't have to debate it.
Well, he's talking to me.
Right, if anybody wants, right, stop, everybody. Anybody want to second Martin's proposal?
I think we need it laid out neatly so people understand what it is.
Right, it's been seconded by Joy. All those in favour of Martin's proposal, but the working group continue to, um, work with the lease and the land review, basically. All of us show hands, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favour then, all those against, one, and abstentions, one.
Chairman, can I just ask then that the council puts me on it, because obviously Anne's just voted against it, and she's on the working group.
Thank you very much, everybody. So we now seem to be having the need for eight. Now, the working group had been set up before, the working groups are fine, most people, as of course. I'm not saying that I would necessarily want to... Um, so who's going to, who should be on, who wants to be on that working group? At the moment, before we take any names, it's got, uh, it's got, uh, it's got Jean. Jean, would you want to stay on it?
Well, I can't, uh...
Um, it's got Joy, Joy, if you want to stay on it?
Yes, happy to.
Um, oh, she's on it.
Me, Anne.
Do you want to stay on it, Anne?
I do, yes, please.
And Loe as well. Would the working group want to, uh, would the working group, uh, on this particular working group, would you also want it to have representatives from the residents and from the Ruttland House Community Trust?
I think, I thought we already had that.
We have, but would you want it to continue?
Well, then, obviously, if they're confidential parts, we wouldn't, and as a council, you wouldn't invite people who weren't entitled to that information, but I think they should form part of the invite...
So they should be given a spring plug?
As we're going to be discussing their lease, they're sitting behind you.
James, would you be happy to stay on that?
It should be a council working group.
Only?
Yes.
No, no.
If it's to decide the lease.
Right, thank you, everybody, for having the conversation. All right, sorry, sorry. Right, what I would suggest is that the working group is set up as councillors and the clerk, and that they do take input from the residents and Ruttland House Community Trust. And because of the confidential nature of what we discussed, because it is a lease, that they won't be able to view the documents, but they can certainly give their input, and we've had that already. Does that sound reasonable, James?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and does that sound also, uh, sound, is that all right with the Ruttland House Community Trust?
Yeah.
So, so now, at the moment, we've got Jean, Joy, Anne, and Loe, and Martin wants to join this. So Martin, are you proposing that you join this working group?
Yes, please.
So if Martin's proposing self, can I have a second up for Martin? We're going to take Sally Anne. So we've got, uh, proposed by Martin, seconded by Sally Anne. All those in favour of Martin, show hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, five in favour. All those against, show hands. One. All those abstaining will be the remainder. So that means that the working group consists of Jean, Joy, Martin, Anne, and Anne. Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Anne with the call on.
Yeah. That one with that one.
No, no, that's fine, because you can do the eight, we're doing it, we're making impact. And, and obviously the clerk will be on it.
Right, this is important. Well, we got the last proposal, which...
No, the, um, ladies, leave, if you don't have time, if you want to, you can leave that. The last bit was, was all about council grants permission associated expenditure to the clerk to instruct a solicitor. Should we do that?
I thought Martin said bring forward together.
You said bring forward together, so...
Yeah, if we can give, maybe, I don't know if that...
All across the season, not on eyes. So a proposal from Martin...
Then it doesn't have to come back to council once...
Is there any video on this?
No, it's fine, it's just to make sure that the clerk has it.
Okay, Martin has, um, proposed that the council, um, grant permission for the, any associated expenditure enables the clerk to instruct a solicitor to help agree a land valuation.
Well, I, I think, I think we need to take, take off instructing the solicitor, because it's not really a solicitor's job to get a value.
All right, we'll instruct somebody.
So it's just the expenditure for the clerk to instruct, it's the most strong thing needed.
With the work being declared...
No, it says instruct a solicitor and to arrange.
A land valuation.
All right, sorry, I misread him.
All right, Anne, also ask a question.
Because of the co, the cost of all this, I'm sorry, I just, they, they should be the, the group, the, the subcommittee, and asking, had they, the, the, what the land register land, it says, I don't, at this stage, I don't think we need to consider this. I'm worried about the price.
Well, unfortunately, the, the tenant wants to do it, and it's a cost we have to, yeah. And they should pay a hundred percent as a commercial thing, but for some reason, we agreed only fifty percent.
Right, and it's not an unreasonable thing to ask, um, in that respect. And the thing is, at the end of the day, all it is, is to make sure that the working group can actually get some work done, because in fact, don't forget, as councillors, we normally make decisions, and clerks, and solicitors, and land agents, land agents do. So we can't ring up solicitors and ask them to do something, we're not empowered to do that. We can only make decisions as working groups, get it confirmed by the council, and then the boss says it's...
And also, it will need variation to the lease, that's why we...
So, and they know the legal stuff, I don't, and certainly people around this room, I don't think everybody knows as much as they're likely, I'm afraid. Uh, so that was proposed by Martin, seconded by somebody, Sally Anne, thank you, Sally Anne. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, nine, because I can see your pencil in the air, abstaining? One abstention, right, eight is definitely closed off now. Unless there's any other...
That's good, that's beautiful.
Thank you very much, anybody else, anybody from Ruttland House Community Trust or residents, if you want to now leave, please do so.
If you want to stay, feel free. Take me with you.
Right?
That was all you.
No, it's, that was all, yeah. Follow me, follow me.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much. I appreciate you. You guys are great to have you. That's right. Tell me she's shot off a bit. That as well, couldn't they?
I did, thank you. Basically, it's only when we're throwing that, we're not going to car park in.
Well, it's the Ruttland...
Well, I'm telling that, when I went down there, you were...
It's Ruttland County Council, they don't need it.
Are you all right there?
Yes, I'm fantastic.
All right. Right. So, you, you, talk about it, fine. We won't move the tables back, because it would be just more disruption. Let's move on to item twelve, because we brought that forward to the next piece, which is floral displays. I'm going to just open this up to the floor, has anybody, councillors, got any comments or observations they would like to make at this point? Daniel?
Everything Chris said was completely sensible, I'm pretty cheerful. I don't see anything more that needs to be settled.
Okay, right, uh, Joy next.
Right. On the, um, the, what's it, sheet?
General item.
Yeah. Um, there was some disappointment with the floral, with the floral displays this year. I think this was down to the weather, not down to the contractors.
Yes.
Um, if we, um, when I went to my training, Alison gave me our strategies, our strategic objectives, and our strategic objectives as a town council, um, mean, include to ensure that Oakham remains a pleasant environment to which to live, and to promote the town as an attractive place to visit, and I think our part in helping with the floral displays is really important to that. I agree, it completely was what Mr Mort said about a fifth option. But maybe we might look at the schedule that we have for planting for this year, and make a slight, you know, renew the contract for one year, but make a slight amendment, because one of the reasons, one of the reception baskets that didn't work were the ones in Knights' Yard, and Knights' Yard lock themselves up every night, so we paid for the contractors to water the plant pots, but they couldn't get in to do it. So maybe if we reduce...
Tweak it.
If we, yeah, we tweak it a little bit, we, we change the schedule just a little bit, but get them to redo the contract with slight modifications.
Paul? Yes, I'd like to support, this is, um, your option, and again, it's Joy's, then, maybe just, you know, alter the contract a little bit, for the difficulties this year arose, and perhaps, uh, maybe, maybe.
Yes, quick, and Alison will be giving some advice on this as well in a minute, so, Anne?
Oh, yeah. I was looking at doing the working group setup, so that we can sit and discuss what we want to do with these flower displays. We know a lot of the flower displays, people aren't happy with, and we need to make a lot of changes with them, I think. And that's why I was going to support setting up a working group.
With who?
With who? Well, I'll just do my car parking, who else?
So working group, it gives, so you want the Town Council to work closely with Oakham and Bloom?
Yes, together, yes.
What should, what should happen?
Yeah, uh, Martin?
I agree with that, and I'm pleased with the chairman's comments this evening, it was a bit better than his email that we saw recently. Well, I'm entitled to say what I should...
He's entitled to his opinion.
And, um, yeah, and, and I, and I hope this is a good way forward, because I, I think we should be working with more groups, and we don't work with groups in this town. The, the, the current contract has not been good since we've had them. They cost a lot of money, you were talking a hundred and fifty pounds, a hundred and twenty pounds per basket, which to me is extortionate. Even Gates Garden Centre, you can spend sixty quid. We've lost floral displays from lots of shops, because most of them find that the baskets are too big and ugly, and I was hoping that, I did raise this when we knew the contract was coming up some months ago, and I was told, put a paper, it's not councillors' job, but we finally, it's come to council through someone this evening, Dave, but this should have come from the office in good time for us to go out to tender, and obviously work with Oakham and Bloom on what they want. It, it is, I wouldn't have said that the quality of the flowers were poor this year. I, what I would say, and this is comments from the members of the public that I work with, once they understood what the theme was, because they're older people, they were quite pleased, but they didn't get it at first, because it was all white and boring, with the odd little red in. But once I told them at work what it was, they were happy. But I think we could have done better, but that's the contractors. So I, I think we could, because we, we had the situation of the baskets going on properties which, I don't think they should go on.
This isn't the working group, by the way, this is meant to be, you meant to go on the items specifically, is there a message?
Yeah, I'm just saying, there is a thing about setting up a, what I'm trying to say is to move forward, is like Sally Anne, we, we've been told there's not enough time. Well, the council has gone out to tender in much shorter times in the past on hanging baskets, but I do tend to agree that we stick with the existing contractor. We possibly reduce some of the sites, like, we don't need so much on the cycle shop.
For the working group to decide.
We don't, but I'm allowed to give an opinion, we, we don't need to be putting them in the opticians, which are not in the town. We don't need to throw away Knights' Yard's baskets and to put ours up to let them die, so we could use the money, have a meeting with Plantscape for this year, and say, look, this is what we pay you, this is the High Street, Mill Street don't want them, because they're too big, make the effort in the High Street. So I propose that we do set up a working group.
Um, everybody's got that, I should...
Yeah, so that's what my proposal would, I would support, a setting up a working group which would work quickly with the existing contractors, so that we have something next year, based on just making the High Street look extra special.
I've got it, right.
Anne. Well, first of all, we do have representatives that are from Oakham and Bloom from the council. Secondly, I think a working group would be good. Thirdly, I think, does that price, Mr Mayor, does that pricing through the watering as well?
Yes, and the pots.
It's been a lot of... Rest of the pots.
And the rest of the pots.
Right, because I do think it's rather expensive, and to be honest, I've seen a lot better hanging baskets that have been bought in a, in a local place, and I don't mean Gates', I'm not going to say, because it would be advertising.
You just said it.
I didn't say it, I said not Gates', you don't know which one. And then, and I just think that if we put it out to tender, we would have time, and I was disappointed with Michelle. No, it was bad weather, no, it wasn't, it was too good weather, but I just think we should look around elsewhere, and we have got time, thank you.
Great, thank you, Joyce?
I'm doing a Robin Shite.
I know.
Those who know what I'm talking about.
She's like, as everyone speaks, and then she catches everybody, it's annoying.
Right, I've had my say.
I'll put a clock on.
The, the weather was against us. If you look, and I unfortunately didn't bring the photograph, some of the mangers were absolutely beautiful. It is far too late to go out to tender now, because we need to be doing the seeding now, am I right? Yes.
Martin, go.
Oh, well, yes, exactly. We should get the drinks, we need to be starting now. Last July, last July, I brought up the point that we should have an audit. I, I'm sorry, but we're far too late discussing other things, when we should be doing things that are important to this town. Okay? And the other thing, I'm sorry, Oakham and Bloom, I'm not going to say this, but Oakham and Bloom should not dictate to Oakham Town Council the colour scheme. It should be a partnership of what the colour scheme should be. Last year, it was white, and I have to say, green, because there was far too much green in, you couldn't see the flowers. I took some of the flowers out, outside, um, Wilco's, couldn't find any flowers, it was all green. It should be in partnership with Oakham Town Council, Oakham and Bloom, to decide on the colours.
Right, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, but that's, that's how I felt last year. We asked, I asked for an audit with all the hanging baskets in July. I'm sorry, to go on, but I've done my...
It's important to get these messages...
Yes, absolutely.
That's what we're here for. So, out of all of that, has anybody got a proposal then?
Yes.
I've said Joyce.
Yes, I've got a proposal.
I picked a point, Joyce is going to tell me the proposal is.
That's Joy.
Joy, that's actually, yeah, Joy.
You've got, you've got two more letters than me. I would like to propose that we, with slight tweaks, accept, um, look for a contract with Plantscape for the coming year, but we more or less fairly quickly get started with a working group to look for the year after, so that we're well ahead of the, the game, yeah.
Yeah, Anne, sorry, Alison, we want to make a point about that contract.
Um, what I wanted to say was that we've done that in the past, we can take them off for you, but obviously it is down to them.
Okay, so it is down to them, they may not, they may choose not to, they may go, ah, no, we don't want to know.
We have, we have done that in the past, where we can ask, keep the original contract and extend it, but obviously it is down to them. And the only, and the only other thing I was, was going to say that, which I think has been said, we did, we have spoken to Oakham and Bloom with the colour scheme, I think we've done that, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a proposal from Joyce, thank you very much, Joyce, that we try and extend the catalogue for just, a catalogue, the...
Contract.
Actually, contract for, for another twelve month period, with some tweaks, because bearing in mind that Plantscape can turn around and go, yes, we will give you one more year at the same price, if you want to reduce, they're not obliged to reduce their price. So don't go in thinking that you can dictate terms, because they, they hold the cards at the moment, okay?
Although if they said, perhaps it's going up a little bit, we said, we'll take a few bits out of it.
Yes, you could, yeah, so just bear in that mind, so don't go in thinking that you can go back, back in. And also, just to point out that our own contractor had highlighted that the railings on Cutts Close, wait for the railing baskets, was pulling the basket out, and I know this has been disputed by some people, but always not do that, you get on that railing, you can rock the whole railing.
Yes, you can.
So the working group, working with Oakham and Bloom, can look at all that. So we've got a proposal that it's extended for twelve months, for that working group, and we'll point some names in a moment, work with Oakham and Bloom to make this the best year ever. So that's the proposal, we'll do the working group in any minute, so proposal from Joyce?
Can I just make a point that Joyce said call them to work next year? Can we make it very clear that they actually work with Plantscape to get all that money spent on this year correctly?
Yeah, yeah.
As well, so that it's not just...
I think, I think everyone accepts it, they mean from, it will be from, um, 2019 to 2020, that's what the year will be.
Could the working group could also...
Yes. They could start working on...
Ten, ten just for the problem.
They're still here in May, the eighteen. So we've got Joyce proposed, and it's seconded by Joyce, all those in favour, show hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so that's nine in favour, abstentions? Two abstentions. Now, the second thing is, who's going to be on the working group?
The two people that know most about gardening.
So councillor Lewis?
Sorry, uh, Paul.
He goes.
Paul Buxton's our representative, and that's all we need.
All right, so, so, so who is it?
All we need.
You're not on it, you're, you're, right, so Paul is one, it needs to be more and more birds.
It needs to be a minimum of three.
Yeah, who, who else? Sally Anne?
Oh, right, fine.
And Joyce, do you want to go on as well? You're there anyway, aren't you?
I'm there, oh, yeah.
You're there anyway, see.
Anybody else fine?
No, I'm fine, thank you. I think I've said what I think is happening in the proposal.
Sorry with the... Paul, Sally Anne, Joy, who proposed, Paul would propose, Ronnie, Joyce?
No, no, I'm, I'm...
Just in a minute.
You proposed, you proposed, Paul, who proposed? Sally Anne was proposed by, uh, by, by Joyce, and Joyce was proposed by Sally Anne.
Can I, can I propose that someone from Oakham and Bloom is represented, is on there?
Well, it's, yes, and that they work with Oakham and Bloom, okay? Um, so, so we've got, we've got proposers and seconders, they will do the vote on mass, all those in favour of those people? That's, uh, everybody, and one abstention? Yes?
I know, sometimes you can't pull the baskets out of a church shop.
Yes, I'm...
I just did a four, I think, no? It's all right.
Yeah, take some, take some off of Mrs Buxton.
I'm sorry, I just...
Right, thank you, so...
Thank you very much.
So that's it, okay?
I want to work, I have a work, uh, tomorrow.
Can you grow carrots now?
Joyce, if, if Oakham and Bloom has the same success as the Christmas lights, which I was... You're in for a rip roaring time.
If you want to practise on my garden.
I like decorations, I'm spending money. Right. Right, well done, everybody.
All right, what are we doing now?
Who knows?
Right, item nine is working group's distinctive strategy, if we've got any written reports... Right, item nine is working groups and staying group strategy, if we've got any written reports on, neighbourhood plan are great, not what I had got a meeting planned in the diary with them. Promotion publicity working groups, Sally Anne?
Yeah, I've just got a little.
Go on then.
I just, um, I'd like to thank everybody who came to help us with the Christmas switch on and it was very good success. Um, we've had a lot of positive feedback around the new lights, um, and even the fake tree now. People have seen it in all its glory, they really like it, yes. Um, I would just like to make a suggestion that we send out a thank you letter to Joy Everett of Arts for Rutland who have lent, who lent us the staging and microphones for free of charge.
Do you want to write in a letter Alison and then I think Sally Anne needs to sign it.
Thanks.
Can I say something unfortunately while you're seeing this?
Did you want to answer that? No, I won't answer that.
Oh, oh, well, no, you've got to now, you've started it. It was a thing like that.
Martin?
At the beginning of the meeting, one of our councillors, um, made a thank you. I think it would be appropriate that if it's minuted that we thank all those who made, um, Sunday's events a success.
Right, so.
No, but we can ask at certain points to thank these people.
At this point here, yes, can I be minuted from, uh, from, actually really?
From the council.
I apologise actually, I should have said it again. But yes, it was actually being, but it is minuted, in fact, I mean, the success of the light switch on and the success of the lights in the town. Has been, I have to say, I was a skeptic, I don't want to say that because I was unsure about the, the tree. But it has been a rip roaring success, so my hat off to you and to you. And to those other extended members involved, because that was, it has.
It was nice to see on the local paper, the front page.
Right, any, any report, what, what, um, what Alison was alluded to that I said no way to discuss it. Unfortunately, on late night shopping, some of the Christmas balls seem to have come adrift. So we need to check, see if that was by accident or by deliberate activity. Balls.
On the train, oh, not, not, they're not going across.
Right, St George's, is there any report from Daniel, nothing reported, minute?
Verbal.
Shoot.
Oh, dear. Right.
I'm sorry. Sorry, and reference St George's Barracks.
There's a sword behind you.
Right, reference St George's Barracks, um, there's nothing more than he's said that everyone isn't aware about now. It's about to go to the cabinet on the 18th of December and upon their decision on the 9th of January, we'll actually get back to that. Would you like me to stay standing up for the next one, George?
Okay, the Tusk Town Tusk and Finish Group.
Yeah.
Yeah, please do, yeah.
Really, um, there's another meeting on Monday, as you know that the reports now have come back. Um, so all representative members on the Tusk and Finish Group have been asked to consult with their respective organisations throughout the process so far. I've already, as you've probably seen on their report, as you've seen on their reports, I've said to them that we are willing to step in and obviously play our part. But we have to know, excuse the language, we have to know what our parts are.
Okay.
We're more than happy to do that. Um, the council will also seek formal agreement of the other bodies involved in the space and the partnership board.
Okay.
Do you have any more things to say?
I'll find out more on Monday. The, uh, well, everybody probably take a, if you've not got one, a copy of the Tusk and Finish thing over there.
I think they, yeah, they were sent out email, weren't they?
Yes.
No.
No, this will be on the.
God, I heard. It'll be a chapter, seconded, guys, now. Save it for that. Because the answer, the comment you made might be.
They don't need to use that.
I can't hear what's going on.
What, what comment do you want to make? And it's going to be brief.
It is very brief, it is very brief. I was trying to read that and I'm aware about the reading age of the general population. And I've spoken to Christopher Clarke about this and he's in full agreement, excuse me, with me, that that is written for about 5% of the population. That is not a readable item and Chris Clarke admitted it wasn't written by them, it was written by the person that's been paid to do it. The language is appalling for the general population to understand and read.
Okay, thank you for that input. Right.
Not, not Christopher Clarke, it was the person that's been paid.
Right, okay, I don't know why, I have to take it out of the meeting afterwards and you can. Statement of accounts at item 10, decide whether to approve the statement of accounts 31st of October. And also decide whether to approve the statement of accounts at the 30th of November. Martin, you've proposed we accept them?
No. No, I, I did indicate to you before the beginning of the meeting, the difficulties with the financial working group. Um, it's become impossible to arrange any meetings, even though I was told that we would have meetings. These accounts have not been rectified this evening because nobody could come with me to do it.
Reconciled.
Reconciled, sorry. Um, so I will be notifying the Clarke that I'm stepping down from the financial working group because there's no point. And to me, it's a shame because the finances and the accounts of the council are probably one of the most important parts of this council. But I am not sticking on a group that's not performing or actually doing anything. So I get the blame when things hit the fan basically, if something did go wrong. So, um, so I, I, I can't accept these accounts because I haven't done anything.
Right, okay, so Martin, to make us aware that we.
And that's nothing against the Clarke, it's because we're not following correct procedure.
I'll bring it back in January, I'll just, you send it to me, I'll put it on January agenda to another member.
Well, we need to review all the membership.
Right, so Martin feels that he was, he's not, he's not been able to reconcile the accounts. So he doesn't, he's, he's not prepared to support the, um, approve, approval of the statement of accounts. So is anybody else wanting to approve the statement of accounts 31st of October? Every council should be looking at them anywhere and asking any questions. Sally Anne?
Yeah.
Ask, you, is it from October and November or just October at first?
Well, I hope I have both of them, sorry.
Okay, well, we'll take, we'll do one at a time, Sally Anne's proposing October, so I will second it because I'm also looking at them, so I have no issues. So looking for a vote for that, show your hands to accept them. One, two. Eight and, two elects, or two abstentions?
Abstentions.
Two abstentions. And then Sally, are you going to approve?
Yeah, I will too, yes.
October, the November 30th, or Sally Anne, seconded by councillor Low again, all those in favour?
Yeah.
And then two abstentions again, yeah? Oh, and then three abstentions this time.
Sorry.
Three abstentions, so it's still going. Number 11 is the authorisation of pennyboys over £5,000. This was in the contract that we pay the people, so unless anybody's got any objections and.
Does this include the Christmas tree? Yes.
Yes.
So this is the absolute, the absolute total for the Christmas decorations is?
It's, yes, we paid, we paid 50% um, for Christmas.
And we agreed to pay the balance after they were installed. There are still.
What's the total then?
It's, it's, uh, 18,000.
And there were still some ancillary costs that the council had agreed that it would pick up, like, I think there's sort of partly active testing, partly electrical infrastructure. The licence and road management.
And the traffic management.
So anyway, uh, proposed then by Sally Anne, seconded by Daniel, all those in favour, the ponies paid, unanimous. Yeah, well, shall we, shall we, shall we postpone until January? Uh, item 13 is the local transport plan. Uh, I don't know if everybody read it, I, I struggle to read things sometimes, so I, unfortunately I did print it off, I looked through it. Peter, you went to the meeting, didn't you, as in the neighbourhood plan? Is there any, and then what it is, I know that there's a sheet, isn't there, that we're meant to give feedback on, isn't there?
Oh, yes, yes.
So it's what we, let me see what Peter's taking, then I'll come round.
You know, as a body, we don't have to fill in the sheet, we could simply write a report back to them to say what we thought about it.
Can do that, yes, you can, yes.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest. I don't, I don't like the, um, reform particularly.
It's very, it's very leading.
It's, um, yes, and it, it's solid, I think we should highlight the, the key issues. And the question I raised, uh, at the meeting was the future of bus services. Because at the moment we're all for ransom, buying bus companies. And I think, I did speak to the board volume all the, as the same afterwards. And I think we need to think out of the box, be prepared, um, for loss of services. Hopefully it won't happen, but it could happen and it happens very quickly. They can give us three months notice and the service is gone, yeah? And then people can't get to work in Peterborough, Stamford, Alton or wherever. So I think we need to be looking at mini buses, um, the dial ride, um, maybe is a mixed success apparently. So that needs to be, um, thought about further. I mean, the transport plan does a lot more than this, but to me, it's, you know, people getting around who can't drive. Those who can drive, I mean, we've got more flexibility and freedom.
I know they want to reduce driving as well, don't they?
Well, that's right, I mean, the government is, you know, they want to do one thing, but they're not funding the transport, so the, um. The health system doesn't, that doesn't work and that's not uncommon. Um, we need to keep a weather eye on St George's Barracks, what that does, I mean, that will give the opportunity of more load works. But with something like that, it needs to be related to the actual area itself. We can't sort of span by the L square. It's got to be, um, it's like the old section 106, it's limited to that particular area. So what I would suggest is we do an initial verbal response, um, to what I'm saying and what other members might feel about it.
Okay, so we want to capture our concerns about the, uh, longevity of bus service and the, uh, and the opportunity where dial ride could be incorporated.
Yes.
For utilised. Joyce?
I was at the cabinet.
How could you mean, Alison?
I was at the cabinet meeting, um, when this was first discussed and it was actually discussed at, um, a greater level on that particular point. And the officer from the council said that we have been very reactive in the past with the bus services and bus companies suddenly saying we can't do something. And they are, have actually now started a new policy of being proactive, that they get the bus companies to say when they are struggling. So they have plenty of time to start looking at other options. And there was, there was quite a lot of what you're worried about, Peter, that was discussed and is actually being taken into account. So it's, it's, you know, there was, there was more information at, at the previous meeting. I do feel that having read it through that a lot of the, um, um, the aims for the transport policy are very aspirational. Um, um, very forward thinking, um, a lot, a lot of things in there which, I think a lot of bigger old folks maybe haven't got down to thinking about. And maybe because we're a little county, we can manage some of these things better than, than other places. Um, I did like the, maybe other things such as. And there's, there was a lot of, a lot of reference all the way through about, um, walking and cycling and pathways and, you know, in the town as well as, um, through the villages, you know, to get people to, to cycle more and to walk more. I feel enough, quite a number of the points that come up in the, in the, um, the transport plan are echoed in the Tusk and Finish group plan. Only with specific aims that overcome, so the same things can be done first, so it can be quite.
Martin?
Yes, I, I echo a lot, echo a lot of things that Peter, I understand. Um, but I, I'm also as a person who doesn't drive and relies on public transport, understand concerns from people which can be seen on social media. Um, the bus thing is a big thing for me and other people as well as the train availability. Um, one of the things that, obviously Peter didn't mention, Uppingham, that I like is that Uppingham Town Council grasp these things. And I'd like to see our council do more. They had a hopper bus in Uppingham, it did start off a bit, um, dodgy, but I believe it works quite well now. And then there's also in Rotherham, we have a very, very good silent organisation which used to be called V A R, volunteer drivers, but they've renamed it. And I think that the council should take that into account and perhaps support that more. It's very well used, I see the cars every day going to work and, and that. So, you know, some of the gaps may be being filled with that, but you can't rely on it. And I just wonder why the council hasn't considered that, which is quite an important part of transport in the, in our community. It's not just Oakham, it's all over Rotherham and it's a very good thing. But, you know, it's something that maybe the council down the line could look at supporting some of the gaps.
Okay, so maybe capture that comment that the, the council, uh, looks at, um, supporting some of the identified gaps if you can. Whether that's from the environment or financially, I don't know. Uh, Joyce, how could you mean, Debbie?
Uh, can I sit down because I've lost the will to words?
Yes.
Right, uh, we, uh, we were told about a few things about the transport plan on whatever day that was, Monday.
Monday.
Monday. And you'd be. My eyes were open because Rotherham County Council and a neighbouring county, say Peterborough's.
County.
They have, uh, an agreement that each county pays a certain amount, I'm right, aren't I? In this, uh, for subsidies for buses. If the county that isn't Rotherham withdraws, then Rotherham County Council have to pay the full wag to go up to the borders, which was a bit of an eye opener. I still have a problem, uh, well, I still have a problem getting on our hopper service round Oakham because it's not very well organised. And we haven't got, uh, enough bus shelters with perch seats for people like me to use it, so I don't use it anymore. I use it in the summer for a little joyride round sometimes. But the other thing is parking in this town, and I don't know whether you're aware, and I don't know whether we've been consulted on this. But there's going to be a lot of development in Corby, housing developments, right? And we usually get, uh, asked for a, a feedback from here. And I don't think we've ever discussed this huge development going on, housing development going on in Corby. And if you go through Corby, you'll see all the banners out, they want a bypass. Uh, so, you know, it's not, it's not only about transport, it's about accessibility for the hopper service for Oakham. And parking, sorry.
The bus.
It's a vast, it's a vast.
Is there any comments that we need to capture on what's been already picked up here? I mean, overall though, with the council's core.
I'll be looking at trees myself. Just waiting for the vote.
Well, it's, um, obviously the document is, I mean, it is a good document because it is, yeah, it is very, a lot of it is kind, this guy perhaps. They're ambitious, but yeah, Daniel, feedback, comment. Something we could try and put into this.
Um, I seem to recall from a mention, forgive me if I'm absolutely way off base here, but we're not allowed to get involved in the running of other services. I'm sure I heard that said in this, um, chamber.
No, we could, we, we could if we wanted to.
We could be involved in lots of things, but we don't.
I think you can do.
Yeah, we can, thank you.
I won't.
We can open a pub if we.
Thank you, I think we captured the comment that the town council should be involved in future plans and ideas. And if it can support it, I'm not looking for volunteer drivers of the minibus. Because I don't know that, it's, it's not as sustainable sometimes as what you want.
We have, we have powers to contribute financially to, to spend on your community transport schemes.
Yes.
We can.
Yes, we can.
If we invoke the empowerment act, we can open a pub.
Yeah. Anyway, let's, Joyce, thank you, thank you.
We have a lot of powers since we can do.
Thank you. So, but overall, do the council, I know we're not going to go through the checkbox then going, yes, 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 because it's very much a leading thing. But we, we sort of do embrace the approach that the county council are taking, wouldn't you say?
Yes, I think.
So we need to cover that comment, but we'd also, we would love to see how better as a parish council with a small income of less than £275,000, we could contribute. And, yeah, volunteer drivers are not sustainable, I don't think. However, providing funding for a small mini hopper bus is, as long as the county council, let's say, pay for driver, that's the sort of thing you should be thinking about.
Just, can I sit down as well then?
Yeah.
Just to say that a lot of people that I know have complained about the one that just goes to Stanford as well. Because they sometimes don't go because the tyres are totally worn out and it's, it's just not on this. And hopefully they stop the rollers after they, but I think they might have started them again, but you have to come back really early.
That was because, that was because one of the bus companies pulled in the plug. Anyway, one of the bus companies pulled the plug at short notice because it wasn't, it wasn't cost effective, so county council would court him.
I mean, you, you should tell Lucy.
So we've captured some commentary there, so we're going to feedback on it, Alison, in some kind of a format.
All I've got is that the council would like to be involved and embrace, um, the approach of RCC and that we should provide funding for a hopper. All I've got is that the council would like to be involved, that we embrace the approach of RCC, and that we should provide funding for a hopper.
Could, may, yeah, we may, maybe, yeah, maybe in the future. If, if, you know, that sort of thing, depending on what it was, of course, we have to be, we have to be able to afford it. So, and also capture that, we've not, we've not responded with the tick box questionnaire, because there was too many, you know, some things you can't be by committee, because there's 12 people in here, and they were, you know, I mean, it just wouldn't...
Yeah, but I may say, it's, it's going to be developed anyhow. You know, they recognise this is the first stamp at it. They're going to get feedback, develop, but they know it's not quite right initially.
So, basically, yeah, so the main thing is to capture that the town council was very keen to be actively involved. And just, nearly, right, the last item then, so that's happy, I don't think we need a proposal or second for that, we'll just get Alison to write it up and send it through then, as feedback.
Can we have a read before it goes?
Yes, can we email it out before it goes, and if anyone wants to tweak it?
Yeah, that doesn't say anybody wants to.
Feed it directly back to the, the Clarke, right?
Can I just have one more comment? It turns to Joyce about the business about the subsidies. Following through from the, the meeting, the cabinet meeting, what they were saying was that the subsidies is divided between, say, two or three counties, and they sometimes were concerned that maybe we were paying a bigger share, considering how much of the bus route was in Rutland, and that they were looking at renegotiating some of them. So it wasn't that they were really paying for other people, they were saying we should be paying their share of, of the subsidy, not more than our fair share.